Mike, we have about only 59 waiting to tune in so far and they're going by the They're going by the clock on the YouTube channel.
Yeah, the YouTube channel is live.
Thank you.
Scott, are we waiting for more people to be let into the meeting that are in the queue?
Hi, Mike. Carrie Socha here.
Hi, Carrie. Welcome.
How do I remute myself, please?
If you move your cursor to the bottom of the page, you'll see the camera, the phone symbol and
No, 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 I'm on the phone. I'll just hit my own phone mute button. I think that will work. I didn't know if there's something special. Okay.
Scott, are we waiting for others to be let in? So I'd like to get the meeting started now on time.
Okay. I believe we've had the people that are queuing in for public comment are here. I think there's two individuals that are speaking and then three that you received the emails to read in. Jen Brown, is that accurate? Are those folks all in? I know John Moser's in. I know she's assisting Marsha Cooper Schmidt with some technical difficulties.
Okay, we'll give it another minute. Okay, thank you. Okay. It is 5:02 or 1702 hours. If you follow military time, I call the meeting to order. This is Michael Pucaro, Chairman of the Ellington Board of Education. First item on the agenda, please rise, face the American flag near you and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Citizens and Staff Forum. And I understand Mr. Moser is our first person to speak. If you could please unmute your line and state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours, Mr. Moser.
Okay, thank you. My name's Jonathan Moser. I live at 31 Frog Hollow Road. Thank you for giving me the time today. I'm on the Advisory Board, the Go Back to School Advisory Board. I'm a parent in town here. I have four children or students in three different schools currently. I also run a software company and we work with schools all over the world, approximately 5,000 of them. And I have actually been running COVID webinars with schools in China, Singapore, Italy, UK, and the US. I've been able to see a big background of plans put together and what's working, what's not working. Here's the good news. There's a lot of schools around the world that are getting students back to school and it's working, which is really great to see. I understand that Ellington is different than China, different than Singapore and Asia, and there's different rules out there. But I have sat through many meetings with the Board of Ed here in the administration at the school. I think they have done a marvelous job listening to students, parents, and the teachers in trying to come up with a plan that works for everyone. I have to say, I'm not thrilled with all of the things that we have come up with. But you know what? It's not what the administration's doing. Really, my issue is with COVID itself and the change that we have to go through. So my request to the people in town, the parents, the students, the teachers that are listening to this, this group has done a really good job. I've seen plans from schools all over the world and I really feel the thoughtfulness around this is really good and really strong compared to a lot of plans I have seen. And I really like it. This personally is like a beta plan for a month. They'll go over the details of the plan, but you have 30 days, the month of September, to really figure this out. There's a lot of plans that have been put in place that we have never done before as a community, as a school, as teachers, as students. And we might be like, I don't know how this is going to work. But I personally, working with this leadership team, feel very comfortable that they have thought through as much as they could. I have some friends that are a lot smarter than I am and they've said very clearly, there's no way the human brain can actually wrap around all the details that go into a Going Back to School Plan with the emotions, with the fear, with all the different pieces. So today, in closing here, I just want to say, I really feel this team has been thoughtful, they have listened, and I feel they have a good plan to get everyone back to school, hopefully in October. So I'm turning it back over to everyone. I just want to thank everyone that's involved in this and you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser, for your comments. Our next speaker is Beth Spanswick. If you're on the line, Beth, please unmute your line, state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Beth Spanswick. I live in the Crystal Lake section of town. I live at 59 Sandy Beach Road. I have two boys in the Ellington School District, one going to Crystal Lake in sixth grade and the second going to the middle school in eighth grade. And I do have a concern. It's an ongoing concern about the busing for the middle school students from Crystal Lake to get to the middle school currently. I believe it's two of our Crystal Lake bus routes get picked up with the high schoolers, so they are mixing on that bus, those buses, and then they get brought to the high school and they transfer onto another bus, pick up more students, and then head to the middle school. And from everything that I've heard, all the suggestions by the medical professionals, cohorting is going to be very important to keep the disease from spreading. And by mixing all of those kids on the buses, I'm very concerned, especially considering the high school is not going to be cohorting, if I am correct in what I've read for your plans in Ellington, and I'm wondering if there is any way that's going to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Spanswick. We will be going into details of the plan, so I hope you stay with us for the next item on the agenda, and I believe that item will be addressed. I have three written statements that I would like to read into the record that were submitted for tonight's Citizens and Staff Forum. The first one is from Shawna Powell, 21 Elrich Place. And she writes, "I just wanted to write to say that I have hope that Ellington Public Schools will open fully in person on September 8th, 2020. Our numbers are so low in our region of the state that we owe it to our kids to give them the best education as possible, and that means in person. I have three kids in the school system, one in high school and two at Windermere. I am not concerned at all in letting them to go back to school in person at all. If they are able to play fall sports, attend dance classes, and hang out with friends, then they can surely go to school. I understand that there are families that do not feel comfortable letting their children go back to school and they feel they would prefer distance learning, but I hate when they try to control everyone else. Dr. Fauci and Governor Malloy," I think she means Lamont, but it says Lemoine, "feel as though children should be back in school full-time. Let them go back. My high schooler is so close to college and needs to get as much as she can from her high school education. I understand that distance learning will be different than it was in the spring, but nothing can be as good as in-person. There are so many working families that hybrid/distant learning won't work for them and their children's education will be put on the back burner. Please do what is right and don't cave to fear mongering. Please have all of Ellington go back full-time." Thank you, Ms. Powell, for your comments. The next that submitted, next person that submitted comments is Jennifer Palmer located on 42 Ridgeway, and she writes, "Since numbers in Connecticut are good, I feel the kids should be in school 100% with live instruction to start. Kids are resilient and a majority of kids will be able to handle the mask requirement. Based on the spring, I have concerns with distance learning. All children need live instruction. How would hybrid learning look? 50% of the classroom or 50% of the school? How are elementary kids learning? Are elementary kids home logging in to watch a teacher in the classroom? Or are kids watching a five-minute video and doing one small assignment?" Thank you, Ms. Palmer, for your comments. And our last individual writes, her name is Erica Canton on 41 Ridgeway. "We are writing to voice our opinion on the upcoming school year. Our intention is to send our three children back to school in person. We feel very strongly that the kids should be in the best learning environment that the science will allow. In our case here in Ellington, we believe that means kids in school full-time, five days a week. Short of a full in-person school week, we think it is equally important that if we go to an alternative format, that our kids still receive a full week of school with full-time teachers. Should the children and teachers not be able to be together, then we would at least like to see the teachers in the school buildings teaching a majority of synchronous lessons throughout the day for all grade levels. We are asking the Ellington School District to provide the best education possible. As parents, it is our responsibility to figure to figure out all the logistics and make sure our children are doing the work and attending school, no matter what format we in. Should we be in remote learning, full or part-time, we are truly hoping for a dramatic change from what we saw in the spring. We understand it is challenging, but this is our reality. Accountability for students, teachers, and parents is the key to making these alternative formats a success. We must provide the opportunity for students to learn at the highest level, hoping for a great year." And then that concludes our Citizens and Staff Forum comments. Thank you, Ms. Canton, for your comments. The next item on the agenda is the reopening 2020/21 plan, and I'd like to begin with a few comments. Turn it over to Jen Zen, Vice Chair of the Board of Education, who's been the designated Board Liaison with Liz Nord and Miriam Underwood before turning it over to the Superintendent Administration for the formal presentation for the possible action that we'll be taking tonight on the reopening plan. As Mr. Moser said, this has been, I think, one of the most, if not the most difficult decisions that we as board members have had to face. And for those of you who were part of the workshop, Gary Blanchett, one of our longest-serving Board Members in Ellington, one of the longest-serving Board of Education Members in the state, he doesn't speak too much at board meetings, but when he does, people listen. And he said something along the same lines that was very sobering, and that is, this is a very important decision that we have to make because lives depend upon it. We take this decision, to those watching, as a board, very seriously. We are working, we've put in hundreds of hours as a board, going through workshops, having meetings upon meetings, working with administration, separate individual meetings, lots of follow-up phone calls and emails to make sure we have all the data that we need to make an informed decision and ultimately do what's best for our students here in Ellington. I would like to give a perspective, I think, on behalf of the board, again, to those who are watching. Many of us have students, we're parents, we have students and children in the school system. I have a spouse who's a teacher in the school system, as well as my daughters in the school system. So I'm looking at this through a parent's eyes and dealing with the same struggles of daycare and trying to figure out how to make the work week work for both my wife and I as both working parents. So many of us are dealing with the same struggles in our roles as board members, as well as as parents. I think it's important to know that when we look at bringing our children, our students, back to school, that we're looking at the whole child. And that's been the really challenging part here, I think, for all of us, is that we know school is important for education, but our children count on our schools and depend on our schools for so much more than just their education. It's the social and emotional development of our children that our schools play a critical role on. It's the cognitive development of our children that our schools play a critical role. For some of our children, it's where they get a good portion of their nutrition. And for other children, it's where they get services that you can't get through distance learning. So we take that into consideration, and that's part of our risk management approach to looking at bringing students back and doing it in a way that will address those concerns that, if not addressed now or sooner than later, could have permanent, long-lasting impacts on the development of our students, of our children. And so that's something we take very serious beyond just the curriculum and educational development of our students. The last thing I think it's important to know is there are other factors involved in our decision-making process, like addressing the achievement gap. We know that the pandemic and distance learning in general had to be implemented very quickly. It needed to be enhanced if we're going to continue to do it, or if the data forces us to do it, or the state forces us to do it. So yeah, we realize as a board, we need better distance learning, but we gave it our best shot, and I think the administration did the best they can in a short period of time to get a distance learning program up. But I agree, it could be better, and I know the administration has a plan to address that as well, and the board has made that a priority through our planning process. So you'll hear more about our enhanced distance learning and look forward to sharing that with all of you. But I think the pandemic has disproportionately affected some groups of students more than others, which again drives us to trying to get our students back into the classroom as quickly as possible. Students of color, students who speak English as a second language, students who have special needs, and others have disproportionately been affected by the pandemic and have widened the achievement gap. So if we were to go into all the issues, we could be on the phone, I could be speaking about this for a full hour myself. But I wanted and I hope I was able to convey to those on the call and reinforce what the board has been doing. There are multiple complex issues that we have to address with getting our students back into the classroom, and I think we all realize as a board that it is a priority for those reasons that I outlined. But we need to balance that with the public health data that's out there, which is favorable right now, and we have to balance that with the needs of our staff. And that's something you're going to hear about from the administration as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jen Zen for additional comments, and then we'll give it to the Superintendent for tonight's main presentation of the plan. Jen?
Thanks, Mike. I just wanted to give everybody on the call just a quick perspective on the reopening Advisory Committee. In the last seven weeks, we've had seven meetings all based around offering a higher-level input with health and safety as our number-one priority. Members included health professionals, teachers, staff, parents, students, board members, administrators, town and health officials, all of us coming together to take a look at what the statistics are. And over the last seven weeks, we've looked at national and state and local trends and dynamics. We've reviewed the Connecticut State Department of Education guidelines that they've put out. We've discussed implications of what's going to happen with HR for the district. We've also talked about transportation and what approaches we need to take. We reviewed some staff and student and parent surveys that we've put out, something that the administration's been very good, very quick, putting things together, getting feedback from the community, and discussing communication strategies so that everyone is as informed as they can be with things changing as rapidly as they are. And lastly, we offered input on the draft of the opening, the EPS opening plan. So all of that together, we've gotten a lot of great input. All that being said, it's still a difficult decision. I know that Mike has addressed that as well, and I've lost midnight sleep because it is our children and our children's safety. So with that in mind, I will turn it over to Dr. Nickel and the team. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be here. It's been a pleasure working with the Board of Education in recent weeks and all the stakeholders on navigating this challenge. I want to start out, and I think sometimes, you know, I'm the superintendent of the school and, you know, everyone, the Board of Education charges me with running the school district and working with the staff in a productive way. But sometimes it's important to talk a little bit about more of a personal matter to provide perspective. Just as many on the board, I live in a different town, but I'm also a parent. I'm a husband. My wife is an elementary principal, so, you know, we're an education family in that regard. I have two boys. One is going into high school and is going to be a freshman, and this is not the entry into high school that we envisioned for our boy, our firstborn. We envisioned something totally different, like I know many of you have. We also have a 10-year-old. He needs a lot of support. Smart kid, loves gym, right? Loves recess. And we're concerned that when we're working, what does daycare look like for our 10-year-old? How are we going to ensure if he's doing distance learning or hybrid or whatever our town is doing, how are we going to support him? And so this is what our summer has been thinking about, preparing for Ellington to reopen, thinking about our family, my wife thinking about her school. And I only bring this up to say, and to really start out by saying, everyone has a story, right? Whether you have children or not in the system, whether you had them, some of our board members had kids go through, but every single resident of the Ellington family, of the town of Ellington, has a story, and it's an important story. And their input and their feelings and their feedback of how we're all moving through this just uncharted time since March, we're going on six months. It's super hard. And what I've said is, there are days that me and my wife feel great, that we're on top of it, that we feel like we're moving forward, and then there are days that we feel like we're overwhelmed. And I know everyone feels that way in different ways. And so I think it's important to start off by acknowledging that. But here's the thing. We've got a great town. We've got a great school district. We are going to move through this. We're going to have a successful school year. And we're going to be proud of our staff and the work that they do. Kids are going to reconnect with their friends in ways through school. They're going to reconnect with their teachers. And we are going to move through this, and the 2021 school year is going to be successful. That's the bottom line. So I'm going to go into present mode right now, and, you know, I'm going to present for the, you know, the beginning portion of this. And we're going to be, we're going to be making some recommendations that are grounded in a lot of conversations that have happened over time. And we're going to be asking the Board of Education to consider that. And you're also going to be able to hear from a couple of our elementary principals, middle school and high school, and then also Mr. Hendrickson, our Assistant Superintendent, to provide some further context. So let me go into present mode, and just to let you know how this works, when I'm in present mode, it's harder. I can't see, you know, the expressions on the board members' faces. I'm just looking at a screen. So bear with me if I make any errors in that regard. Okay. Mr. Pucaro, am I showing correctly here?
You are good on the live stream as well. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So, you know, let's just start out here. I want to, of course, parents that are watching right now are very well aware that we've been asking them to create the Student Enrollment Verification Form. It's an annual form, but we've also added some questions in there basically on, you know, what is your decision? Do you want to be in-person, whether it's hybrid or full-person or distance learning option? And we've asked that for that information by August 14th. Naturally, many parents have filled this out and many have not. But the question is, well, how can I make a decision without having all of the information? And it certainly is a reasonable contention regarding wanting more information to figure out what your plans are going to be. The administration, to answer a lot of the details and really get granular with how we're going to reopen schools, we need to get a sense of what parents are thinking. And so we're asking you to complete this information, if you haven't already, by August 14th, for our planning purposes. The more information we have on this, the more we can figure out all sorts of different operational aspects of how we're going to how we're going to implement whatever model we end up on. Of course, if there are extenuating circumstances, if you get new information, and as a family you decide to change your decision, we were just asking to do that by August 26th at the latest, but the earliest as soon as you know. And then we can move forward from there. So I wanted to remind everyone that, you know, as we do this planning and as we get more granular in the next couple of weeks, we'll continue to communicate in more detailed fashion. You saw in the last couple of, last week, where the principals started to come back with their Friday message. They're meeting with building-based reopening committees that have teachers, that have paraprofessionals, that have nurses, and they're starting to figure out how we're going to be able to do class lists, what the classrooms are going to look like in great detail, you know, what is dismissal and arrival going to look like? Getting more granular on the distance learning expectations, which you did receive a little bit more on that in an email from Mr. Hendrickson that you, was sent out about 4 o'clock today. You're going to get more information. And so just know that we're going to continue to do those targeted communications as we move forward here. Tonight's discussion, two things we're hoping to accomplish. A, to determine the hybrid model, what would be the hybrid model, if that is what we end up with. And also, and we originally thought we were going to make this decision next week, but quite frankly, the feedback we've gotten is that parents and staff want a decision to be made on the reopening of school on September 8th. So we hope that we're going to be able to make that decision tonight and move forward, and we are going to be making some very clear recommendations. So as, you know, Mr. Pucaro and Ms. Zen had referenced the process, I just want to add a little bit more to that. We have been in constant contact with local and state public health experts ever since March, gathering all sorts of data and listening to experts in a variety of different ways. That also includes, we've had a reorganization committee that has teachers and various staff on it, led by Mr. Hendrickson, that has been working with other school districts in the state of Connecticut and the Center for School Change to figure out how do you improve distance learning? What are some different approaches to reopening schools? The stakeholder meetings, this is what we've done this summer. They're off the charts. You know, we're over, it's, we're getting to the point where it's over 100 hours of meetings, and we've been doing what we've called Cabinet Leadership Office Hours, where we do them one per school and we invite any staff member, and those are having anywhere from 30 to 80 And those are having anywhere from 30 to 80 individuals, staff members, that are coming to those meetings. And we've had multiple of those, and they're providing feedback. We've had PTA presidents providing feedback on a regular basis to Mr. Hendrickson over the last five months. He's been updating them on the reopening advisory committee. And we actually had the PTA presidents at our last reopening advisory committee meeting to provide context of what their conversations have been with teachers and what they feel is important for the reopening of school. So the stakeholder meetings have been very helpful, and processes is really important. And throughout that, we've acknowledged all of our challenges and being overwhelmed and really tried to process that together as best as we possibly could. Of course, there's also been surveys and different things that have gone out there that have been referenced in the past. And what's been really, really important is we've had some board workshops. Just this week, we had one board workshop that was close to four hours long, going through all of this information and trying to figure out what is the best way to move forward. And so that's been very, very positive. The feedback, it's, as you're going to find out, folks, it's mixed. People want a lot of different things. There's an extensive amount of dichotomy here. And it's, you know, it's, what we've emphasized is that it's fine to have your own personal perspective on this and to share that in a respectful way. But what's also equally as important is to recognize that there are other perspectives on the matter. And part of the job of the superintendent and the administration is to run a process that is fair, that is balanced, that allows for a lot of feedback and allows for a lot of understanding that not everyone thinks the same way, and we're a community, and it's important that we move forward in that fashion. Now, just some elements here, and all joking aside, you know, I know I'm challenged hair-wise, but that's not supposed to be a picture of me spinning those plates there. I left that there for you to consider. This is a very, very complex issue. There are just multiple things to be thinking about for all of us, and it can be quite overwhelming. Safety is a big deal. And yes, we'll talk about some of the data in the state of Connecticut and that being very positive, but we still have to think about all of our staff in that. And if you notice there, this is how successful organizations treat their employees. You can't, it's not, if we do not consider and think about our teachers and our staff and supporting them and understanding what it means for them to come back to work, what it means for them personally and their families, you can't run school and have it be excellent for the kids and the families if our staff aren't there or if they're not ready and prepared. So great organizations take care of their staff, and that's one of the things we've been doing. However, we have to be thinking about the family's perspectives. I mentioned my perspective, and I have my own personal opinions on whether schools should open and how it should open up. But our families are out there. They have a wide variety of different types of families with multiple children in school, out of school. Our families have daycare issues. We have families that, you know, when you have stressful financial situations and you're wondering how you can go back to work or not, and what you're going to do if we're in a hybrid situation or we're in full distance learning, this is very stressful. This is difficult. And there is enough data that says that our parents do want to go back to school. You know, we're talking close to eight out of 10 parents that are saying, get us back to school, get us operationally. And that has driven a lot of the conversations. But yet at the same token, we understand that whichever decision we make, there are going to be people that are not pleased with it. Consensus in this matter is going to be very, very difficult. But we're going to move forward. Of course, seeds of civility, and I've referenced this, promoting a fair exchange of ideas. I just want to say, I am very proud to be part of the Ellington family. The emails, the phone calls from parents, from staff, the interactions that we have had have not been about drama. They've been about, let's work together. Thank you for working really hard. We're going to figure this out. Here's my opinion, and I want to share it in a respectful way. It's been fantastic. The administration, the board, has felt supported by the community, and that's amazing. Now, I want to talk a little bit, this is, however which way we go back and when we go back and what that looks like, folks. The science tells you that multi-layered mitigation strategies for safety of students and staff is important. You know, do you have a plan to promote healthy behaviors? Do you have a plan to maintain a healthy environment? Maintaining healthy operations, preparing if someone gets sick, what do we do? We have plans moving forward. And so if you really look at some of these multi-layered mitigation strategies, these all work together to help to mitigate the spread of the virus. And it's important for people to understand that mask-wearing, social distancing, cohorting, you use those in concert. Do you have mask breaks? Of course. When you social distance, are you always three to six feet apart? Not necessarily. There is misconception that people, that there is a rule that you have to be three to six feet apart at all times. No, the goal is to maximize social distancing. Sometimes adults and children will be less than three feet apart from one another when in school. This is okay, which is why you also have mask-wearing and you also have cohorting, and you use all of those healthy behaviors. Cleaning, sanitation, classroom modifications, all about a healthy environment. Bus transportation, school breakfast and lunch, how we operate those are all part of the consideration. And of course, isolation rooms, risk assessment, using our nurses, working with families and their doctors to have processes and protocols in place for our staff and our students to ensure. All of these mitigation strategies are helpful. Not one overrides another. Our mindset, please know this, that we're preparing, possibly, that we may have to be in three different models this year. We do not know what March will hold for us, or December, or May. So we're preparing. That means it's possible that we want to be fluid and be able to move from a hybrid to full in person or to full distance learning, if that is what is required. And we're trying to align our systems to do so. And of course, we'll be looking at making those decisions in a timely fashion with as much public health data as we have in other factors. Now, the state context, this is what the State Department of Education in consultation with the state public health has provided us. And right now, we are in, you can see the yellow box, the green box around it. We're below 10 new cases per year. This supports a full in-person learning. It does not, it is not a requirement, but as you can see, there's moderate for hybrid and high for remote learning. There is a caveat, and some people are not aware, that we are not allowed to do a full distance learning where no one comes into school unless you get a waiver from the state that also has the Department of Public Health, State Department of Education, and a variety of different representatives to ensure that the waiver is approved. Here is right now the current status of the indicators by county. And I won't go through this and read this to you, but the gist of it is, is that it is at a low rate right now, which is very helpful. Leave that for a moment. This presentation will certainly be put in PDF and on our website for anyone to revisit it in the future. So getting back to the complex challenge, one of the dichotomy here is this. We want kids back in school. We want to be thinking about if, when they're back in school, whatever way, five full in person or hybrid, how are our staff going to be supported and ready? And are they going to be available? Here's what you have to understand. 80% of our staff live outside of Ellington. That's teachers, that's paraprofessionals. And so there are considerations for the region when we think about this complex challenge, because we need to make sure that our staff are available. And there are all sorts of complicated human resource considerations from FMLA, Family Medical Leaves, to quarantine if someone is exposed, to ADA, compliance issues, that is all federal law, that all factors in to ensuring that to operate the schools, we have to have our staff there. Yet, we also have to balance that with what our family's needs are and the children's needs are. The regional context is this, folks. In 35 area school districts, 27 are K-12 hybrid. Secondary hybrid only, three in full-time in-person, five. We're all going to find out how this goes in September with the decisions that people make. And I will say this, there will be a downside for any decision that is made. But it is a consideration to think about what is happening in the region and how it would impact our ability to effectively run the school district. What we're going to be recommending is temporary. It's a transitional phase, a temporary transition phase, because what the goal is, is to get five full days in person. So we need to think about it in those terms. And remember, our children have been out of school for six months. They need to be back. The transition is going to be very challenging from a social, emotional learning standpoint. It's going to be challenging in the dichotomy of how we work with our staff to support those students. What we are presenting and recommending to the Board of Education is a hybrid model. And we're going to go into some detail now regarding this. You've seen this. We didn't want this to be a shock. This is what we've been discussing for quite some time. If you can see a typical weekly schedule, we would divide students. Half the students in all of the schools, purple group. You can see in-person Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, distance learning, Thursday, distance learning. And then the gold group would be on the Thursday and Friday in-person. The silver group are the families that have decided that they want distance learning for their children, that they've opted out, and we will be providing them a program. A very small amount of families have chosen homeschooling where they are not, they have exited from the school district for now. But let's dig into this a little bit more. What we're recommending is that, and this is the transition part, folks, this is the temporary. Starting on September 8th, which is the day after Labor Day on Tuesday, we're recommending that we go hybrid model as just presented all the way through Friday, October 2nd, which is approximately four weeks. We want to reevaluate the decision September 28th or next, near that time. That's about a week before. And if the data supports it and other considerations support it, we want to go full in-person starting October 5th. We feel that moving forward in a hybrid model for this one month, and if things hold steady, that we can do this as a community, that it is not optimal, but that we can transition our staff back, that we can be in concert with the region in terms of making sure our staff are available. And that, as a parent myself, trying to figure out how to do daycare for one month in a hybrid model is not what I would prefer, but is doable. And to be quite frank, my school district where I live is going into a similar hybrid model. The first week of school, just a little bit different. You can see Labor Day is there. Tuesday, Wednesday will be that purple group. And Thursday, Friday will be that, will be the gold group. So we're not going to have a Wednesday full distance learning day. We want to get all the kids in the school, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday. And we will be doing a half-day schedule for that week. Moving forward, we're going to give you much more details. Should this be the direction we go? We'll give you a full calendar for the month of September in the coming days. Some general concepts that I just mentioned. Purple, gold, silver groups, you see. Also, purple and gold groups assignments will be based on. We're going to try to get these assignments done as quickly as possible. You may have seen that some districts are like, if they do hybrid, they're going to do by alphabet. They're saying that for planning purposes, however, please understand they're not going to, that it's much more complex than just saying A through L or A through M is one group. We're going to be prioritizing siblings staying together. We're going to be looking at special education 504 needs. We're going to be looking at class sizes and scheduling, very complex, from kindergarten through grade 12, all the different levels. We're going to be looking at better solid numbers on families opting for distance learning only, and we have to look at staffing considerations. And all of that, we'll be able to start, get those groups assigned. And we want to get those to you next week as soon as possible. We have people working on it right now in preparation and anticipation. And there's going to be work going on over the weekend to try to get these two as quickly as possible, because quite frankly, you need to know. You need to know where we're at, so you can start making your plans. Our high-need special education students, which is a very, very small amount, under 30, we're going to be working on getting them into school four days, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday. There's a lot of conversation on remote learning. What does that look like? Is it improving? And yes, it will. And there is going to be a combination of live instruction and asynchronous instruction. And how that looks will be very different in the different grades. But our teachers are going to work with the administration at the building levels to provide elements of live instruction for all of our childrens on a regular basis. It's important. You can't have a child go three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, without having any live connection with their teacher to help move their academic progress along or even their social, emotional learning progress along. So live instruction is important, and more details will come on that. And of course, there will be very daily schedules in instruction, K through 12. This is natural, and we're working on that. And we're going to be getting out more information as the weeks come on. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to Principal Verderam and Principal Nash Ditzel over Elementary. They're going to give you a little bit of a flavor. We're going to give you a flavor now of elementary, middle, and high school of what hybrid looks like. And what they'll be doing is they'll say slide next, and I'll be moving their slides. And that's just an operational issue. So Principal Verderam and Dr. Nash, if you could take it over for these two slots.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Nickel. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Thank you to the board for letting us continue our dialogue. And thank you to the Ellington community for joining us this evening. I want to speak on behalf of the elementary team and what the hybrid would look like in all three schools. So in essence, the school would be divided into two groups, as Dr. Nickel had said, a purple team and a gold team. And if you are on the purple team, you may be in school in person on Monday and Tuesday and then be part of distance learning on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And if you are on the gold team, you may be in distance learning on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and in school on Thursday and Friday. What this is going to allow is reduced grade level sizes in Ellington. And what we mean by that is that in center school, we have three first-grade classes. And on Monday and Tuesday, we might have one of those three in person, and the other two might be in distance learning. While in second grade, we may have two out of our four classes in school while the other two are participating in distance learning. And we would do that throughout the entire school. So at center school, we might have approximately 10 classrooms in live person while 11 would be in distance learning, which in essence would be freeing up half of our classroom space. That's going to be less students utilizing transportation. So we know that we certainly will be not only having less people arriving to school, but we also know that in any model, we're hearing that a great deal of parents will want to be driving their students to school. So in this model, we believe that will help with traffic flow to begin the school year. It's also going to allow for more available space within the building for us to be flexible and creative and think outside the box and also utilize some of our larger spaces that if we had our entire 21 classes being used, we would struggle to do that. Each group's going to go in-person two days a week and distance learning three. And that's going to allow time with the teacher during every single day. And that's a critical point that we'll share on the next slide. And lastly on this slide is that in this model, it's going to allow in many locations of the building more passive sanitation time where spaces will be vacant for five days. And that's going to allow for more healthy choices as we move and try to progress towards that October timeline for a full return. Next slide, please, Scott.
Thank you. We want to be very flexible with the use of our buildings. And so in this hybrid model, one of the things that we're going to be able to do is have lunch in most places outside of the classroom, which was something we've heard from staff and from the Board of Ed as a concern about students being close to one another in the classroom and having to take
as a concern about students being close to one another in the classroom and having to take their masks off to eat. So in this model, we would be able to look at larger spaces and create some more space than there would have been in the regular classroom for students to eat and have their masks off. We also will be able to use mask breaks. Unified arts classes will have a lot more consistency. And in this model, with this hybrid, our unified arts classes could run much more smoothly in person, keeping their typical class schedules, as opposed to doubling their class schedules if we were in a half the class type of model. Most importantly, we want to share that it's really going to increase opportunities for consistent instructional models and engagement. We've heard from the community how difficult it was in the spring to work as parents and as families to help our young children. And we were concerned about if our teachers were teaching and trying to do distance learning at the same time, how engaged would our children be and how much would fall on our parent community? So we felt very strongly that in this model, the students would be in front of the teacher for two days, and they also would then be able to leave that session with materials and with directions. And then for the next three days, participate in meetings, possibly live stream sessions, and have contact with their teacher all five days in a consistent manner, which we really believe would help with engagement. The teacher can continue the content from in person through distance learning in a very smooth manner in this hybrid. And also, there's consistency in meeting our social emotional needs, because the same adult will be making contact five days a week with our students, and we felt strongly about the need for that. And our support staff will have access to these groups as well each week and throughout those five days. And we feel that it's, it's giving our students a sense of community. And most of these decisions also were looking towards the end game of five days in person. And this would allow to start the school year, that classroom community of an entire class to feel a part of a class, to be together in person, and then to be in small live stream sessions possibly on the days during distance learning. And they wouldn't be coming back in two separate groups to try to become one. So we did feel that that was something really important at the elementary level and found these things to be positive for us to move in the right direction for the Ellington Public Schools. Thank you, Dr. Nickel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Verderam. I appreciate all your work on this. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Michelle Murray, one of our co-principals at the middle school. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Dr. Nickel. You can move to the first slide. Thank you. Hello, everyone. So the middle school, very much like the elementary school, is looking at a hybrid model that both helps us support the safety mitigation strategies that we're doing in the building, along with providing what we think is the most effective model for instruction for our students coming back into the school year. We took a lot of time to think through the logistics, many of the concerns that parents and teachers have expressed to us around instruction, around safety, around just the logistics. For the middle school, the hybrid model will be divided by team. And one of the reasons that we like this model is that the middle school is a teaming approach, so we want to keep to that. We'd have one seventh grade team, which would be five cohorts of students or five classes, and one eighth grade team of five cohorts of students form the purple group, and they would go to school on Monday and Tuesday. And then the other two teams, one seventh grade and one eighth grade, would form the gold group to go to school on Thursday and Friday. For the middle school, this is an important, this is really important, because it reduces the number of students in the building overall and the total number of cohorts in the building at the same time. So places that we were logistically trying to maneuver, moving students from class to class, that was something that we heard many students and parents express, that they wanted a middle school to be able to have cohorts move their classrooms, which is much more of the experience at the middle school. We can do that with the hybrid and starting that, because we moved from having 20 cohorts in the building trying to pass down to 10 cohorts or 10 groups. It also helps us with other mitigation strategies, like our bus, reducing the number of kids on the bus. And really important, the pickup drop off. That was a concern many parents have expressed about how many kids are coming to school, are dropping off, and just having less students arriving at school at the same time is really going to help us. The other place that, like Mr. Verderam talked about, was lunch. By reducing the number of cohorts in the building at any one time, we actually can accommodate lunch in some of our larger spaces. So again, when mask wearing is not optimal, because you can't wear masks during lunchtime, we can space out the students in a larger area like our cafeteria or our gymnasiums and have lunch there. That was a concern that many of the teachers have, and we really think that that's one of the reasons why the hybrid model at the middle school will be effective for us. All students also will have access to their teacher during the day, either in school or at home. So again, supporting that consistency of having a teacher. If one team of students is having instruction Monday and Tuesday live, it means that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they have that same teacher available to provide that synchronized and live instruction, as well as asynchronous type of lessons during the home time, something that many parents have expressed a concern about and something they wanted. It also means for us an easy transition, both in and out of moving from the hybrid back to a full day in person or into distance learning modules. So the kids get a sense of what the day is going to be like in their cohort, following that schedule twice a week, as well as how to provide lessons very effectively in that distance learning model. Thank you, Dr. Nickel.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. That was very helpful. I appreciate it very much. I want to introduce John Gidry, who is our high school principal. Thank you very much for being here, John.
Thank you, Dr. Nickel. Thank you, everybody, also for giving me the opportunity to address you. You're going to see a lot in this that's familiar, that's already been ground, that was, that was plowed by the, by the middle school and by the elementary school. We have three elements. We have in-person learning, we have some distance learning, and then we have Wednesday, which is kind of a special day in the middle. One of the, one of the keys for us is we want to make sure that we have our students, because at this point, our students are older, and we're counting on them to be a bit more responsible. So we're counting on them to use their personal protective equipment at all times. We will include a mask break during the day, but probably fewer than you'll find at elementary or middle schools. Same thing, we have two cohorts, 50% student capacity in the building at any one time. We have a purple cohort and a gold cohort. One of the things for us that we think is really important, because we're in a building that's a little bit smaller, and we're starting to outgrow it, is we need to work hard to make sure we have clear hallways, and we have actually striped, we will be striping our hallways to where we have traffic control, so it's not a calf scramble, which unfortunately is what you normally find in a high school hallway. So we're going to try and keep that, that interaction, that physical interaction between students a little bit less than it typically would be with traffic control. One of the things that we heard in terms of the data from students and parents and teachers at the end of last year is that engagement goes down as FaceTime goes down. By FaceTime, I mean in the same room, face to face with a teacher. So we are maintaining our straight eight schedule in order to make sure that every student, when they're in the building, sees their teachers every day. So we believe that's really important to us, maintaining engagement where we need to be. We'll have grab and, grab and go breakfasts that are eaten in the A block classroom, grab and go lunches. We'll have to split lunch into three separate periods, as opposed to having one period with lunch waves. We simply don't have a cafeteria that is large enough to handle a third of our student body at any one time. And then, of course, like some of the other schools, we'll be having outdoor and flexible spaces for learning. We think that could be very important for some of our, our music classes, et cetera, where we actually need a little bit more room, a little bit more ventilation. Next slide, please, Dr. Nickel. As you've heard with the other schools, in addition to two days of in-person learning, you've got multiple days of distance learning. So as before, Google Meet and Google Classrooms will be the primary tools that students and teachers will use to stay connected with each other and with the work. They will follow the same straight eight schedule. One thing that will be very different from what we had at the end of last year is that students will be able to experience synchronous learning, because we'll be, we will have teachers where they're live streaming. So a student who is experiencing distance learning, say, I'm in the purple group, it's Thursday and Friday. I, I have the ability to pay attention to all my classes. I actually can see my teachers teaching live, see the work they're doing live, hear the discussion in the class live while I'm at home. And then I'll have a chat function probably with Google Meet, where I can ask questions and participate in a very live, very real, very engaged fashion. For those students who can't do that, we also will have those classes recorded, and they will be able to participate asynchronously. Honestly, I think this is a wonderful thing for all of our students, because I know whenever I was a student, it would be time to study for my first major, you know, your unit test, and you go, dang, I didn't, I didn't entirely understand what, what Mr. Gidry was saying on September 15th. To be able to dial in and see a recorded lecture and refresh yourself to what's going on, I think that's also going to help us with engagement and student performance. Wednesdays are a little bit different. We won't have students in the building on Wednesdays. The focus for those, for that day each week is to help our students transition from, either transition away from distance learning into in-person learning for the next two days, or vice versa. They've been in in-person learning, we're transitioning now to distance learning for the next two days. We're going to focus on reinforcing the current content that they've had during those days. And then it serves as connection and prep time for teachers and students. Again, engagement's going to be really important for us. And we believe having some time where those students and teachers can reach out and connect to each other in ways that are, you know, ad hoc and meaningful is going to be very important as they transition. Thank you, Dr. Nickel. Thank you, Board.
Thank, thank you very much, Principal Gidry. And at this time, and I referenced earlier in, in the presentation, that Mr. Hendrickson sent out an email. It was in Ellington Public Schools, from Ellington Public Schools. You received it four o'clock-ish. And that had a video that kind of started to provide you with some information on, on the distance learning programming that we're intent on improving for students who distance opt out entirely. And for also those that are, you know, in the hybrid model and are in a purple or a gold group. And Mr. Hendrickson has been working with teachers and within the district, outside of the district, other assistant superintendents to really improve upon our distance learning program. We're very proud of all the work that he's done and his, his staff has done. And so he's going to give you, you know, three slides, just a quick overview of that, and then you can expect a great deal more information coming in the next few weeks. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Hendrickson.
Thank you, Dr. Nickel. Good to see everyone this evening. Another key piece that Dr. Nickel, you know, mentioned, just want to jog back to, is the level of feedback that's gone on through this process. So it's important for the board, the community, to know that all of the information leading up to our revised expectations were reviewed by the curriculum committee of the board that's chaired by Dr. Young. And our most recent meeting was on July 23rd. It's been very important to keep the board informed of all of our proposed changes to our programming, and it's rooted in student, teacher, and parent feedback that has been discussed earlier. Also, in a lot of ways, the next three slides have been kind of previewed by our, our high school, middle school, and elementary administration, who's been instrumental as well. So it's been an awesome team, team approach all the way through. So with that said, elementary, the slide in front of you breaks down the expectations of the hybrid, full distance learning and distance learning option. You'll see a tremendous amount of continuity throughout this. With elementary, it's important to note that if a family chooses a distance learning option, the district is planning on having a distance learning specific teacher for the student. So that's an important, very important feature. So again, there's continuity, and also to connect to Mr. Mosier's statement at the beginning about a beta test, specifically at the elementary level, having that hybrid model as proposed allows lots of options for, you know, teachers to prep their students for the distance learning days. And in the event that we go into full distance learning that's required, we will have had a lot of practice, and which is an important feature to point out. Next slide, please, Dr. Nickel. The middle school, as was stated by Ms. Murray and also Mr. Gidry, you see a tremendous amount of continuity between the hybrid distance learning days and a full distance, distance learning model, as well as parents that are selecting the distance learning only option. And again, there'll be more information coming out in the weeks ahead, grade specific and school specific. Next slide, please, Dr. Nickel. The high school, very similar, and to jog back to Mr. Gidry's comments about the importance of the synchronous or live instruction, you do see that clearly on display in the distance learning options. And, and we're very proud of, of the amount of teamwork and feedback that's gone into it. And I want to thank our teachers, our administrators, our students, our parents, our board for being part of this process. And that's why we're very confident it will improve because of the level of collaboration, feedback, and teamwork.
Okay, I'm going to come out of presenting mode. I greatly appreciate, you know, we have approximately, you know, 265 people watching online. That's, that's amazing. I think one of the amazing things that has occurred with us doing a lot of this live streaming on YouTube is that a lot more people are having an opportunity to connect with the school district, and that's just fantastic. And I want to, you know, thank the board for all their work to get to this point and for your, your patience with an hour long presentation. And so, you know, at this time, we can, the administration can entertain any questions or any discussion that the board wants to have with our, with our recommendation.
Thank you, Scott, for your presentation, for the administration, for all the work that the staff and the reopening committee and others have done at this point. Board members, are there any questions or comments that you'd like to ask or make at this time?
Mike?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. I apologize if my internet isn't that great. I've gone through a couple of things in my life. And when I was in third, fourth grade, I had to, we had a real back of polio, and it was hitting young kids. And my friend had to be put into an iron lung to save his life. And so I am acting conservative in this point, because I've seen what happens with, with this, you know, any exovirus is how they can turn on younger kids. They've been hitting older people a lot, but these things mutate, can come after an age group or a different group of people when they need it. So I'm very conservative, and I've never been called to be conservative, but in this case, I'm conservative, I think, in, in what, what I think the hybrid model, instead of having the kids go right back. And what I've seen from it's going back in the other states, it's not too well. So of course, they're not doing sections that we are going to, but still, that's, you know, something, you know, I feel that the hybrid models are best at this point. And, you know, if we still see things are going well, we can, and have all the kids come together. And that's the way to go. I'm a teacher, and that teacher-student contact is very important. If you're, you know, for learning, and I'd be for that model as soon can. But I hope that we can get a team or some way of being able to protect the children in some way. I'm sure that science will come up with stuff. We did so with polio. And we, and when I was teaching, we had another situation where, where there was something called fifth disease, which I think there was something called fifth disease, which I think is of, of, oh, I can't remember what measles, I think. And all the teach, there was an inter, inter said that any teachers that are pregnant had to leave the school immediately. They really didn't get much time to even grab any, yeah, to leave immediately. And that was, I had two teachers taught with, they had to leave real quick. And that was a nut scare. I, you know, because it was colleagues in my thing. And so in that regards, two examples, I, I'm leaning to the middle ground right now where I'm having the kids all go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for your comments. Other board members, comments or questions, please?
Chris? Yes, um, I have a question about the eating in the high school. It said that they will be eating in their classrooms. I know we were able to work it out with all the other schools where that wouldn't take place. And I know, I, I do know that that was one of the main concerns of the teachers was that the students don't eat in their classrooms, that they don't have their masks off and sit there and eat because, you know, spewing and whatever droplets everywhere. Um, is there anything we can do to change that so that the, the high school teachers do not have to have that situation in their classrooms? And we can do it like we have with, with all the other schools. That really concerns me because it was the main concern that all of the teachers voiced.
You know, I appreciate that. Let me, let, let me go back and let me look to see if, again, we have a small cafeteria. That's the issue, right? So let me go back and, and we will, we have a committee that's working on it. I will ask them to, to return to, to the drawing board and, and to think a second time about it and to, to take some, you know, retake those measurements and, and do the math and see if there's any way we could, you know, maybe, 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 maybe make it work in the cafeteria. So I'll look. It's, it's, it's great. I, I hear you. So let me see what I can do.
When I know there's gym classes, but maybe if gym class can be outside and then you can use the, the gym space and the cafeteria space. Or, I mean, maybe even the auditorium. I know we're never supposed to have food in the auditorium, but just some of these larger spaces to get the kids in so that the teachers do not have that extra stress.
Yep. Let me see what we can do. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Anything else?
I do have a question in regards to the splitting up of the yellow, or the gold and the purple teams. I know that you said you'd be taking consideration for siblings and things like that. What are the other qualifications or processes that you're using to determine who gets placed on which team? And I may be opening a can of worms, but if there's a conflict, can that be addressed and something be switched? So say I find out I'm on the purple team, but it's not conducive with my work schedule as a single mom. Am I allowed to transfer teams or to switch teams once that information comes out?
Hi, Jen. Great question, right? Like you, you asked the impossible question operationally of how we're going to try to figure all this out. And like, I mean, we, we always are going to work with parents to try to accommodate as best as possible. We can't guarantee that we're going to be able to accommodate for 2,700 students meeting every single need, of course. But if we can do it, if we can work with switching one child from purple to gold because it's going to be so much more helpful, we will do it. We just can't guarantee it. Like we, I can totally think about, you know, families right now that are saying, okay, my work situation is this. I know that my friends in the neighborhood's work situation is this. I want to be able to have my friends with my two other friends in the gold team because then we can do carpooling. We can do all sorts of different things with daycare that's combined, whatever it is, families are trying to work out, especially in the elementary schools, right? And those requests are going to come in. We know they're going to come in. And, you know, if, if we can do them, that would be wonderful. But you can imagine the complexity of, of those requests. So I, I add that caveat that we're going to be as, as flexible as possible with parents, but we can't also guarantee it. I would ask if our principals here, I know, maybe at the middle school, you know, Ms. Murray, you, you've been pretty good at articulating in the past of like a lot of the scheduling components and, and some of the dynamics of how you're going to be trying to kind of figure out the cohorts. Because the scheduling, although it's not as complex at the high school, it's much more rigid at the middle school and makes it harder to do. So Ms. Murray, are you there?
I am, Scott. Dr. Nickel, I can try to answer that question. I, I would say yes, if there was a parent request, we would do the best that we could to accommodate that. The way the middle school schedule is looking is that we have five cohorts between each of the teams. So for instance, if you're familiar with the middle school, we have two seventh grade teams, the Jaguars and the Panthers. Those are each, there's each five cohorts on those. And we utilized what the students had requested for world language, band, music, and chorus, along with any specialized services to develop the cohorts. From there, we're trying to utilize the team placement that they're on right now in order to support the purple and the gold group. And we'll make some accommodations and, and changes along with the sibling piece. So it's, it is very complex. And we're going to do the best that we can to try to make sure that all of that works. But yeah, some of the things that I'm thinking about is just peer conflicts. You know, this part, this person with another student at the middle school, don't mesh. We've actually already figured that part out. So now it's kind of going to the bigger picture of trying to make those two teams work well with the rest of the district.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. That's great. Would, would any other principals like to weigh in on, on that particular topic?
Sure, Scott, I could speak for the elementary perspective. It's a really great question and we've talked about it and we do want to work with families. I would just share with the board and the community that we always want to keep our safety and distance in mind in the classroom. So if we have thought creatively and come up with two classrooms that have say 16 students in each, and then we grant three or four requests to change, that 16 number boosts up to 20 and the other class boosts down to 12. And then our distancing in the classroom in that 20 gets to be much closer. So that's just one component that we would look at. Another one would certainly be the dynamics of the class, especially if we're having intervention or any push-in support. So there are a lot of components to that. But obviously, extenuating circumstances, we would consider those. But I would just ask on behalf of the elementary principals that the community know that there are a lot of things that would come into play when making that decision. And our original decision-making will have some significant rationale to it. So I just want to be clear that, you know, we have thought of all of those things, but we certainly want to work with families if a situation can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Veron. Mr. Picaro?
Yep. Thank you for your comments. I have two hands raised. Miriam first and then Chris. Miriam?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Um, for me, safety is the most important thing. Safety for our students and safety for our staff. So if I were given my druthers, I would be much happier with just half of the students in a classroom. However, this is only four weeks. I've convinced myself this is an experiment that I can live with, with four weeks for four weeks, but I would like extensive data from, and to hear from all stakeholders be, when we reevaluate on September 28th and have to make a decision for what we're doing on October 5th. I want to hear from the parents. I want to hear from the teachers. I want to hear from the administration. But I want to make sure before we move out of this experiment, I, I, I can go along for four weeks. But I don't know. I'm telling you that I need a lot more information to be comfortable to make another decision on, before October 5th.
Thank, thank you, Miriam. Appreciate your comments. Chris?
Okay, I have actually two completely different subjects, but the first of which is, um, in listening to the public comment, Ms. Spanswick, her, her concern about the bus. You were told, she was told that it would be addressed and I didn't hear it addressed in any way, shape, or form. And, and I understand her concern. That was the exact bus my kids were on. And the high school and then middle school would all get on the same bus. They'd go down to the high school, drop off the high school kids that a bunch of other, then they'd pick up a bunch of other kids before going to the middle school. So that cohort is huge, if that's the bus route that you're still sticking with. So I would really like to see that addressed at some way. We really didn't talk about bus routes in any way, shape, or form. You're probably not there yet until you get your parent surveys and know who isn't coming to school and who's on what team. And I saw Brian just beamed in, so he must have something to say about this. But, um, but I share her concerns for those kids. Because we are looking at cohorting as the safety measure more than social distancing at this point. If we're doing full class, half school and that's really, really blowing that cohort up. I mean, it's, i- i- it's crazy for those kids. So I want to see that addressed and then you can address that. And then I do have another comment, but I'll wait.
Yeah, I would say, Chris, that's also a priority of ours to address. We haven't gotten the full details on, you know, who's opting out of transportation, almost kind of do those routes yet. It would be our goal there. I, I don't want to commit to saying that we're going to be able to do it in, in all situations just because I know the crystal-like geography is a little strange and, and tough to get multiple buses up there into. So I, I don't want to fully commit that, but if we can't do it, I can guarantee that we will put protocols in place, make sure that cohorts are, are not mixing. Kind of alleviate some of that concern. But, you know, I, I don't want to fully commit without having the whole numbers, but it is a priority to address.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And then my other comment, I've made it before and I'm going to make it now publicly. With the elementary school, because we're not, because we are doing a cohort in that sense and we're not doing the half class like Miriam was talking about. I don't think we, I'm afraid that we lose more safety in that the elementary students will be in other, many of them, not all of them, but many of them will be in other daycare situations, again, expanding that class cohort. And I'm wondering, I actually believe that it's safer to bring those kids in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, give them the Wednesday as a mask-free, you know, social, well socially distanced, but also distance learning day. But because it is so much more difficult at the elementary level to distance learn, I believe it might be a better situation to bring the elementary kids in Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. I realize that that makes it more difficult, possibly more risky for the teachers. I also, and, but with that, that being said, we wouldn't be asking the elementary teachers to do anything differently than what we're asking our high school teachers to do. So, you know, that's a consideration. And I do realize that that would make the lunch situation more difficult and have to be rethought and the transportation. So I'm just throwing it out there. I really think that academically, that would be a better situation for those students. And I don't know that it would be any less safe for those students. I believe it wouldn't be. So, okay, I'm done now.
Thank you, Chris. Scott, do you want to respond to Chris's comments, please?
Sure. I, you know, I greatly respect Chris's perspective. Veteran board member who really thinks things through. And what's great is she voices her feelings on things in a very respectful way and it, it actually helps the board move forward in decision-making. So from that perspective, thank you, Chris. And what's wonderful is you and I disagree at times, which is also, and we, we can work very well together and that's, that's an awesome thing, right? So what, what I would say is, is that the, the element of half-class or at the elementary school versus the, you know, half the school full. We spent a great deal of time and effort interacting with our teachers on this, educating them on this. We brought in the PTA presidents to get information on, on this and what their feelings were. It's been discussed a variety of ways and even, you know, we surveyed those elementary teachers twice on this. And so did the middle school teachers get surveyed twice on this. The last survey with the elementary teachers was, you know, 85% saying that this is, this is the model that they wanted. It's the model that the administration, when I say administration, it's funny because I was originally with you, Chris. I was thinking, you know, I was like half-class. That just totally makes sense to me. And then my, my group of principals, you know, they pushed back to say, we're working with our teachers. This is something that we think is going to be really positive and really good from they feel. And I'm also in agreement now that I've learned more about it, that it's more safe in a wide variety of ways.
My comment, Scott, is less about the half-class, going half-class than going four days and, and having Wednesday off, that, that those extra days of having the kids in a daycare situation or a different situation makes the cohort model less safe. It's really not about half-class. My comment is about four days versus two days in school.
Scott, could I just?
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Scott, could I just share something with Chris from the elementary perspective?
Mike Vernon, go ahead.
Chris, one thing I want to say, I hear you and you've heard me in meetings talk about full return for sure. But I also hope you've heard that I really believe in looking at all angles. And one thing that I think needs to be magnified here is in the four weeks, this really allows our kids to learn how to move through the school, how to be appropriately wearing masks, how to do things the right way without a full school. And so that's just one thing that I think would benefit us progressing towards it, is giving teachers and staff and everybody in that building who's been gone for six months time to learn all the new protocols because there's going to be a lot of them. I do agree with you about the daycares and safety. But I think if we have some weeks to teach kids the appropriate ways before we have a full school, we might see a lot better when we do open full. So that's just a thought that we.
Mike, we lost you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, that's very helpful, Mike. And Chris, my apologies for not understanding your question. It's a great point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Chris, thanks for the questions. Liz had her hand up next.
Yes, I agreed with Miriam and Chris on the half-class at the beginning. However, and I agree with Gary that we have to go slow. I think it's for a couple of weeks. This going back to school, even as a teacher, is hectic. But I also think we need to look at the class sizes. Some of the classes will be small. But if we do have a grade level that we have a lot of kids in, are we thinking about maybe getting an extra teacher for that, especially to get started as a permanent sub or something like that, so that we don't have so many kids in a classroom that we can't distance them correctly? If we were putting kids in my classroom, which was about 25 foot by 25 foot, so the, the square footage was maybe 625 square feet. And that, according to social distancing room space calculator, they feel 17 people can fit in a room that size. And those are the size of the classrooms at Windermere, which of course are smaller than most of the other elementary schools and the high school and the middle school. So can we give some consideration to that? Of course, you don't know what the size of the classes are going to be yet, but that we think of some way of handling that if it does happen.
Liz, thank you for the question. And, and before I turn it over to Dr. Nickel, just so everyone's aware, Liz and Miriam actually had tape measures out and were measuring classrooms. That was the rumor today. And I'm, I'm sure it's true because both of them are that engaged and committed in, in their work that they're doing. So they take it seriously and they're looking at the, they're looking at it right down to the inch and square footage of the room. So Scott, let me turn that over to you for a response. I'm sure we're taking it into consideration.
I, I appreciate the question, Liz. And I think Mr. Hendrickson may be able to answer this well for you. Brian, are you available?
Sure. So great question, Liz. And yes, we're absolutely looking at that. Once the tomorrow comes and we're going to get Once the tomorrow comes and we're going to get, you know, more responses from parents, we're going to, and, and, you know, after the board makes a decision, and whether that's a decision to, tonight or next week or whenever it is, we will be looking very closely at the numbers as they cascade along all of the grade levels. And we're going to be working very, very hard and very closely with our IT department and building principals to make sure there's equity across classrooms within the school and also across the district. That will be contingent upon the number of students that also select the distance learning option. So that is absolutely a priority to make sure our class sizes are balanced, and they're balanced in that purple, gold rotation as well. So we're absolutely thinking about that quite a bit right now.
Liz, any follow-up?
One more question. If you don't mind. When we look at the data from both, who's going to be looking at the data regarding cases of COVID? We do have kids, a lot of kids that come in from Hartford, so that's a different area, different health district than the one we have here. We also have kids going out of our district. Who in, is going to be keeping tabs on that and knowing what's going on?
Yeah, so we kind of have a collaborative process that we're setting up with the school nurses, school administration and central administration, as well as the North Central District Health Department, which is going to be helping us to track cases, track data. I can tell you, my, my startup screens every morning, I, I look at the data from the state, I look at the data specific to Ellington, look at the data at Hartford, to make sure that, you know, things are still trending in the same direction. You know, I know the state's looking at things on a, a weekly basis, but we take a look every day at the data. And, you know, when those cases pop up, if they do pop up, you know, it's going to be a combination of our, our school nurses alerting central office administration, alerting North Central Health District Department, and then going through a risk assessment process to make sure that if, you know, that student needs quarantine, then they'll be quarantined. A group of students or a class needs to be quarantined, then that'll be the case. And, you know, again, within our plan, we, we have talked about, we may need to close a school for a couple of days in order to get those done, transition that school to distance learning mode, and then maybe come back after we do a cleaning, things like that. Those are all the processes that we're working on and developing. But I can tell you, it's going to be a large effort. Getting in the school is just the first step. And then we have to contract these things on a daily basis to make sure we can stay in school.
Okay. No, I'm just saying, thank you.
Okay, I do not see any additional hands raised this, this time, so I'll open up. Any additional comments or questions for the board? Before I call this to a vote, any additional comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion, please?
Michael?
Yes, Mike. Dr. Young?
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm going to make a motion in just a second, but I would like the privilege of just thanking you for your leadership through this very difficult decision-making process. I think it's been eye-opening for me to see the level of detail that folks have given, the attention they've given. You've heard of hundreds of hours of meetings. I've been part of that. I want you to know that as I make this motion, I am also kind of in support of a letter we got from James and Francine York, which was pushing us to open for five days a week immediately. That's kind of where my heart was set. And the discussions that I've heard have moved me somewhat off of that to this transition proposal that we're about to make. I think what I did not see in comments like that from Mr. and Mrs. York is the intention, and you heard it today, the intention of the board to also consider the safety and input of the employees and their, their perspective on this. I can only say that in my day job at UConn, I'm going to go back and be a teacher. I, thank God, I passed my COVID test on Monday, and I'm now allowed to go back to the, the campus. As you know, many kids are going to start streaming in there from all over the world. And when I go back, I'm going to be teaching teachers about online learning. And so like Mr. Moser, I've had the privilege of hearing about what other schools are doing here in Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, as far as ways, California and North Carolina. I'm going to work with Mr. Hendrickson to make sure that our distance learning is the best that it can be. I know one thing we didn't mention tonight is that we've installed webcams in all of the classrooms. And so the possibility of sharing and being, even when our students are not face-to-face, they're going to be able to be remotely co-present in those classrooms. And I think that will be a discernible difference for many parents as we look at the quality of the distance learning option. So thank you for that opportunity. I would like to make a motion as follows. I moved that the Ellington Board of Education endorsed the hybrid model as presented, and its full implementation starting on September 8th, 2020, with a reevaluation date the week of September 28th, 2020, with the possibility, assuming continued favorable health data and other conditions, to move at that time to the full five-day in-person model with a distance learning option starting on October 5th of 2020, or another date to be determined as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Seconded by, and that's okay, Jen, seconded by Jen Mullen. Any discussion? I, I would like to say to your comments, Dr. Young, thank you. And we are fortunate to have you on our board and leading our curriculum activities. Thank you very much. Any further discussion about the motion on the floor? We have a first, we have a second.
Mike, I just want to throw in some discussion, if I may, just briefly. From my perspective, I don't believe that there is a perfect answer in the environment we're in right now. I know everybody thinks differently, but I, I echo Dr. Young in that we have to look, it's our responsibility to look at all aspects to ensure the safety of everyone. And I'm actually on the opposite end, Dr. Young, as you and I sometimes are. I'd like to see us do distance learning until it's safe. As, as, as a mom, my mama bear comes out, and I want to gather every child that's out there and, and put them in a bubble, but that's not realistic. And academics are important. Curriculum, as Dr. Young has mentioned in our workshops, is important. So I don't think that we've come to this decision lightly. But I think it's important that we do get them back into school in some point, some fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Any further discussion from the board?
I just wanted to add that, you know, decisions we make do have consequences sometimes, and we have discussed this, and we've been trying to do what's best for the staff and do what's best for the kids. And taking that all into consideration, it's tough. It's tough. And I just want people to realize that.
Thank you, Liz. Any further discussion, Miriam?
Mike, yes. I, I asked for some reassurances that when we reevaluate the week of September 28th, that we'll get information and feedback from all stakeholders. I didn't get a verbal confirmation on that, and I would like that before I vote.
You got it, Miriam. I, I will, I will, I will ask of that, of the superintendent, and I, I'm sure he will be willing to give it. So from a board chair perspective, I would expect that information to be available. And Dr. Nickel, did you want to add to that and confirm?
Yes, I'm confirming that. Thank you very much for the suggestion, Miriam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Any further discussion, Chris?
Yeah, I just want to say, I understand 100% where Jen Zen is coming from. And as the mother of a teacher and mother-in-law of a teacher, I want to keep them all in that bubble too. And, and unfortunately, we can't do that at this point. And so we're all just doing the best we can.
Thanks, Chris. Gary?
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I've been on the board 27 years, and I think I said this yesterday or this is my vote to do. Okay. It may be easy because voting in, in favor of the kids and, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any additional discussion?
Mike, I wanted to, Marsha's mic is not working, so she asked me to make a statement for her. Marsha Cooper Schmidt said that these are really challenging times, and it seems like all of the scenarios we're considering have pros and cons. Given all the options and the feedback, I think that what we're voting for, this is the best option, and I support it.
Thank you, Jen. On behalf of Marsha, thank you, Marsha. Any further comments?
My, so, um, just, just quickly, I guess everybody's kind of weighed in. Given that, that we're kind of, you know, dictated by the, the state and the governor, and kind of narrowed our decision, I think that the fact that this option does have a distance learning option and that the school district is committed to our distance learners, that gives parents a choice. And I think that every household has their own decision to make. So I can support the motion because we do have a distance learning option available and that the school district is committed to that, and it's not going to be what it was before. So hopefully, everybody stays safe and healthy, and we move forward on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any additional comments from the board? Any additional comments? Last call. I will call it to a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Any abstentions? It's unanimous, the motion passes. I believe that is the last item for our agenda today. I want to thank the board for all the work that they've been doing to get to this point, and again, for everyone involved in this process. It's been very difficult, and it's just one more step towards going back to a full in-person school. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Nickel. I may have a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
To adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second it again.
I think it was, I think it was maybe Jen first and then Jen second, Jen Zen, Jen Mullen. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Good night and be safe.